Well, so let's begin, everyone. Thank you for joining in today. This is the Wednesday, January 20th, meeting of the Lewis Planning Commission with all members here in one manner or another. So I thank you for that on this auspicious day with power transfer. We have a pretty good agenda, but I think we can move through it. I'm going to chair tonight because Drew is without internet and he will be on the phone, but he may also be gone from time to time. First item on the agenda is unfinished business discussion and possible action regarding the action plan. Now, the action plan was presented last month to, or this month, to mayor and council. And we left it asking them to go through and put the actions in an order that they are comfortable with. Janelle also included information in the packet. Janelle, do you want to discuss a little bit what you've included for everyone?
So what I included is we broke it out. Last time, last month, we discussed there was just one big, really long list. So we broke it out into commission items and then everything else that, all the recommendations from all the other reports that did not fall into the responsibility of the planning commission. So we ended up with two lists. And then Tom went through, because he, at the last meeting, wanted to discuss risk benefit. So he provided a risk benefit analysis to those items for the action plan list. So next month, we should get back from the members of council, them putting the items in order, and we'll need to discuss that. Now, I don't know if Drew is on the line. And Drew, you want to discuss your thoughts about where the action plan should go from here, or if you want me to discuss the notes that you gave me?
Hearing, not hearing Drew. He needs to unmute. Oh, okay.
Can't. He doesn't have internet service, can he?
Well, he's on the phone, so he should be able to talk. It can help if the host sends a request to unmute and then he can just press on. Yeah.
We have a live John.
Okay. So what I'm going to say is, I know Drew's thoughts about the action plan were wanting this to be an integrated approach so that we could have a unified narrative of items that will help us lead into the comp plan development, that will get a list of actions for 2021 and beyond, and that this strategy will carry us through to comp plan development. So I think his thought was keeping both action plans directly by the planning commission and recommending recommended action by others as really part of the overall analysis of where the city is going. So, so I think that's really what we want to be doing here. Janelle, do you think that we should wait until we get the notes back from mayor and council, or that we should meet before then to continue discussions? What do you think is the most fruitful?
I want to wait until we get those comments back from council and then we can get the subcommittee back together and to meet all at once. I think that's probably the best use of everyone's time.
Okay.
And then we can bring it back, possibly at the February meeting, depending on when we get comments back and when the subcommittee can meet.
Right. Because I'm just thinking that we may get five completely different sets of thoughts from mayor and council, and we're going to have to come up with a way to integrate that into something and then go from there. So why don't we wait to see what then we get back from mayor and council, then we'll set another meeting and see where we go from there, if that sounds good to everyone. And then we'll bring that back. Go ahead.
Just a, just a thought, because I, like I said to you before the meeting started, I listened to the city council meeting recording the other day when they discussed this, what last week, I guess it was. And one of the things that came to mind was, I haven't read the Quinn report in a little while, but it seemed to me that yes, although we did do the floodplain, we built a floodplain ordinance, that was one of the requirements, the Quinn report. There were, and I'm using this more as an example of working toward the integrated approach that sounds like Drew's looking for, because I think that's a fabulous idea. The Quinn report, as I remember, had a bunch of suggestions about other ways of improving our community rating score, I think it's called CRS, which might touch on a number of the other items that are in the LPC list. But I'd have to go back and look, and I'll try to do that in the next couple of weeks and see if I can come up with something.
Okay. Yeah.
I think it's a fabulous idea to work toward this integrative approach.
Yes, because it seems like many items on the action plan, once you do one, so many will fall into order. And I think when we get what mayor and council are thinking, then we'll have a better idea of where to go from there. So I think we'll follow Janelle's idea, we'll wait to get their information, we'll set a hearing, or I would say a meeting, and get together and see if we can't thrash through it to come up with one document then to bring back to mayor or to Lewis Planning Commission then, hopefully for our March meeting, and then be ready to move forward, if that sounds good to everyone. Any other, any comments, suggestions?
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay. Next item is new business, C1, the discussion and scheduling of a public hearing regarding a major subdivision for the lands of Verden located on King's Highway for the creation of five lots, Sussex County Tax Map 335-8.15-41.00. And we had a very extensive packet from Janelle.
Yes.
And what I wanted to give some guidance for how I think this would be best to be handled tonight. We'll hear a presentation by Janelle, we'll hear a brief presentation by the applicant. LPC members can ask questions of the applicant, we'll take brief public questions for the applicant, but our job here really tonight is to make sure that the folder contains what it needs to and set a date for the public hearing. I'd like tonight to stay at a very high level, because clearly we have a lot to read and absorb before the public hearing and then be prepared for the public hearing and to hear what the public has to say. And I'm glad that we have this time so that the public has a chance to also read through the packet, read the GMB report, read the waiver requests, read all the dimensions of it, and so they can come to the public hearing, ready to ask questions that will help guide us all. So Janelle, would you like to start?
Can I just real quick make sure I have Drew on the line?
No, I'm not on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, you actually can. Okay. I couldn't get through on the Zoom, so I got my phone call.
That's true.
That doesn't sound like Drew.
No.
Oh, I thought you-
Okay. So we've got somebody. Okay. So let's get started with this. So this is a five lot major subdivision. We have property off of King's Highway. It is actually split zoned, two different zoning districts, R4 and R2, different lot requirements, size requirements, lots, setbacks for the two different zonings. The proposed lots do comply with all of that. They have provided the required elements for notice requirements to the adjacent property owners. Excuse me. So we are working on, so they have complied with that. There's a number, they did go to the Parks and Recreation Commission. The Parks and Recreation Commission held the meeting in November. They are providing the 10% open space. Parks and Rec Commission did recommend approval with some additional trees. They have actually amended the site plan to provide that tree. So the one included in your packet does show the native trees and in the open space and along some of the frontages. Some of the unique quirks about this is that it actually does front on both King's Highway and the Theodore Freeman Highway. There shall be no access, they're not planning on any access off of Freeman Highway. They are asking for a number of waiver requests, one for sidewalks along the road, streetlights along the road. They're also looking for changes and reductions for the right of way and the road width, and those are allowed by code based on the trips on a daily average. The engineer has reviewed the plan twice. They submitted the original plan. We sent comments, they invited a revised plan, and those comments went out on Monday. They were updated and included in your packet that late this week, because again, we received that on Monday. And I'm happy to answer any questions and I can bring on the other members, the applicant as well.
Any questions for Janelle? If not-
There are two, there are two sort of packets. There's the one that comes off of agenda for tonight, and then there's all the stuff that's on the website. Are they perfectly in line with each other?
Yes. Yeah, the website is, everything should, everything, except for I didn't add the minutes from the Parks and Rec Commission to the website, but they are part of this application.
So in terms of the dialogue back and forth between the two engineers, we've got, we've got, we should have everything.
Correct.
Okay.
No, I have a question. Does this go for state review?
This does not require plus review.
Okay.
Based on the fact that it's only five lots, this does not require plus review.
Any other questions for Janelle?
Joe has his-
Yeah. Janelle, I squinted on the, carefully on the plans I printed out, I was trying to find reference to stormwater. Is there a stormwater system here? I saw a little, something about each, each site will handle it? I'm not sure what that means.
No, they are proposing stormwater for the road, and then they will be providing, going through each individual lot, like typically if you're out other places, you go in for a lot, and you just get a standard permit for each individual lot instead of a system-wide stormwater management, and that is what they're proposing here, is an individual stormwater management. And I can let the attorney and the engineer, their engineer, Bob Palmer, provide more information. We did get a question about why there are two zones. Sometimes there are just properties that are split zoned, the way it was done when properties were zoned originally. So every once in a while, you will just find a property that has a zoning line going through it. So that's why their properties are split zoned.
Glenn, did you want to address that, or?
I can talk a little bit about it. I think, I think Vince is prepared to, and so if he is, maybe let the applicant go through it and I'll add anything that I think is appropriate.
Okay. All right.
And Vince and Bob, you're both good. Yes.
Oh, great. Okay. I guess-
Yep.
Great. Thanks. Well, good evening, everybody, and thanks for the opportunity tonight. And I will keep this short and sweet. Janelle did a pretty good job of the overview. Again, Vince Robertson, I'm an attorney with Parkowski, Gurk and Swayze here in Sussex County. And this is a five lot subdivision for Jerry Verden. I did want to give some context, and Janelle brought up the question about the split zoning. There's a little bit of history here that I thought would be helpful to you all to know, just in terms of sort of how we got to this point and what we're seeking to do. As I mentioned, I represent Jerry Verden. His, his family has owned this property since the 1900s, if not before that. And he's, you know, he's not looking to, he's not a typical developer that buys a property and then, you know, looks to maximize his lot yield and then sell it. And he owns this property and he's not looking to get the subdivision done and sell it. What he's looking to do is be able to keep this property in the family among himself and his children. So that's sort of the, the really high level sort of goals in all of this. But taking you all back, you know, this actually goes back with the city to 2016 and 2017 with the planning commissioner, the planning commission and the mayor and commissioners. And I see a lot of different faces on the planning commission this time around from that. So I thought it'd be helpful just to go back through, and this has to do with that split zoning. Mr. Verden, like I mentioned, he's owned that property, or his family has for quite some time, and it's, as I think you all know, it's right next to the library in the city of Lewis, there between Savannah Road and King's Highway. Before the city got that property for the library, the prior owner of it was looking to develop it with townhouses or, you know, some sort of more commercial or for-profit development. The property was shaped quite differently. That led to conversations with the Greater Lewis Foundation, the city of Lewis, Lewis Library, and Mr. Verden. And what ended up happening was a land swap occurred with the, the prior owner and the city of Lewis and the Greater Lewis Foundation and the library and Mr. Verden, which squared off the library's property and squared off Mr. Verden's property, so they were uniform. And ultimately, the, because of that land swap that Mr. Verden agreed upon, of course, as you all know, the great library got built, which is an amenity not only to the city, but I would say to Eastern Sussex County. But that land swap resulted in the split zoning we're talking about with the R4 zoning in the front on, on King's Highway. I think I mentioned Savannah Road is on King's Highway, and the R2 zoning to the rear of the property, which is, you can imagine is a little bit quirky, because the R4 zoning has different lot size requirements and setbacks than the R2 zoning. It also has different frontage requirements than the R2 zoning. So what we did back in 2017 was applied for a change in zone so that the whole thing would be R4. And the reason we chose the R4 is because the R4 frontage on King's Highway is conforming. If we, if we made the whole thing R2, we'd be creating non-conformity in terms of the frontage, the only real frontage it has on King's Highway. So that's why we went to the R4 for the whole thing, because as you can imagine, it's a lot easier to develop a property or do something with it if you've got one set of rules rather than two different sets of rules. Anyway, we went to, well, and I should back up, along with the, the land swap with the, what ultimately became the library property, the library couldn't have been built at the time without a sewer easement. One of the issues was, at the time, there was railroad tracks, as you all know, that ran roughly along the edge of Mr. Verden's property and along the, what's now the library property. And Mr. Mendelis has maybe dealt with this, and I have, but getting a sewer easement or any kind of easement from a railroad is just about next to impossible. Costly, time consuming, difficult with all sorts of conditions and qualifications, and it's just, it's just about impossible. Anyway, Mr. Verden, at that point, was approached and granted the city a sewer easement across the front of his property along King's Highway, because that was on ultimately the library side of the, of the, the library property, and it connected into the sewer laterals in King's Highway. So he granted that sewer easement, he didn't ask for any payment. It was granted gratis to the city of Lewis, and, and now the toilets flush in a Lewis library. But at any rate, you know, so he's been working with the city and been a gracious neighbor with the city, you know, throughout certainly the city's development of the library property. So we went for that rezoning, as I mentioned a second ago, to bring it into all R4, and we went to the planning commission. The planning commission at that time unanimously recommended that the whole property be rezoned to R4. And we thought, great, no, we're on our way. We got to the mayor and commissioner level and made, you know, the same presentation, had a really strong recommendation from the planning commission, and they denied it. We ultimately, and you should know with the denial of a land use application, there's specific timeframes that are in, in existence in terms of what next steps are. So we ended up appealing that decision to court, and we made claims that, you know, the mayor commissioner's decision was arbitrary and capricious and not supported by the evidence or by the record. Mainly, we did that as a placeholder, because we wanted to explore how we could get Mr. Verden to reach the goals he's trying to reach, which is to be able to convey this property and keep it in the family. And I would say that we've had really good conversations with everyone in the city. That certainly includes Janelle, includes Anne Marie, includes Mr. Mendelis. The mayor was in on a couple of those meetings. Bob Palmer, who is Mr. Verden's engineer, he's had meetings with the Board of Public Works, and he's also talked to Janelle and Anne Marie. And also John Roach, who was the surveyor for Mr. Verden, was in on several of those meetings. So we've had a lot of really good constructive meetings to get us to the point where we are now. And we think it's a good subdivision, we think it's a good design. It achieves, you should know too, it achieves a couple of goals, probably three, I guess I would say, that Mr. Verden has. One is that it manages to provide lots that he can convey to his family. And the caveat to that is that, you know, he didn't buy this property and he's not going to sell the property to third-party purchasers. So one of the things we looked at was, how can we keep those costs down? You know, it's not something where he can absorb significant costs and pass that on to some home builder or some third-party value, third-party buyer. So what can we do to keep some of those costs down? And what's appropriate for that location in terms of keeping costs down? And that's the basis for some of those waivers. The second thing that he was really adamant about, and I respect him for this, in the middle of it, or almost the middle of it, there's a specimen genko tree. And that's been there for, for decades, and he wants to make sure that's preserved. And in the HOA documents, it talks about the preservation of that, but that also impacted sort of where we could place the lots. And the conversations we were having with Janelle and Anne Marie and everybody else, you know, it's, we were moving the puzzle pieces around so that we could figure out how do these lots work where that genko tree is preserved? The third item was the best and most beneficial use of open space. You know, on the one hand, we could have put open space where the genko tree is, but that then would have put, you know, it would have preserved the genko tree, but it would have put sort of a sliver of open space in the middle of this property. You know, what we did instead was, we thought, and we believe, we can preserve that genko tree, again, because this is going to be kept in the family, but then also put the open space out on the library edge of the property. That way, it sort of expands visually the open space that exists on the library property, and we can plant some vegetation on there that makes it not only sort of a larger visual open space area, but also a good vegetated buffer between these houses and the open space on the library next door. And we actually presented those last two goals, the preservation of the genko tree, and the sort of the most beneficial use of the open space and the location of it to the Parks and Rec Committee, and they were really on board with that. And so that's how we ended up with that design. We keep the, you know, the unaltered and zero access to Freeman Highway. That's a limited access highway, you know, it wouldn't make any sense to put any, any driveways or roadway entrances there. And then Mr. Verden's intention is to keep sort of the existing natural hedgerow that exists there in place. So driving down King's Highway, you know, you're still going to have that, that same sort of vegetated corridor, at least regard, with regard to this property that currently exists. So, you know, again, I don't want to get into any more of the details. I thought that sort of preface would be helpful so that you all can understand the context of this. You know, there is a lot of information in the record, and we, we understand that, you know, you all and certainly the public is going to want some time to look at that. But we look forward to presenting really the details on it at a, at a public hearing down the line that you all set. So with that, I'll, I'll wrap up. I know Mr. Palmer, who's the professional engineer assigned to this, you know, and hired by Mr. Verden, he's on the line. I would just ask if he has anything he'd like to add before, you know, we sort of wrap up our limited presentation this evening.
Uh, thanks, Vince. The only, for the record, my name is Robert Palmer. I'm with Beacon Engineering, hired by Mr. Verden to prepare the site plans and seek all of the regulatory approvals that will be interested in this project. And the, we're, we're well on our way with coordinating with Del Dot. We've already done our coordination and due diligence with the Conservation District, and we're working with the Board of Public Works on, and their engineer with, in regards to some of the engineering requirements and making sure that we're meeting the harmony of this, harmony of the city code. The, the, not only was, was cost sort of a factor in trying to preserve this property and help Mr. Verden with his estate planning, but also we looked at this from an environmental perspective, some of the boards and committees and groups that Mr. Verden has been involved with over the years, like the garden club and such, and then, you know, with the garden that Mr. Verden has kept on the property for some years. He's, he's got an eye for the environment and doing, doing what's right for, for the environment. And so from an environmental perspective, allowing the runoff to kind of infiltrate from the, from said lane into the, the right of way that we're proposing to create seemed to make a lot more sense than just simply collecting it through the curb and gutter that is required or warranted by the code. The other solution, and, or the other thing that we're, we're looking at with this, with the narrower than required street width, is we're coordinating with Del Dot in an effort to permit the entrance as a, essentially a shared driveway, even though it'll be a city street. Again, eye on the environment, limiting impervious area, and, and, you know, again, trying to help Mr. Mr. Verden with his, with his goals.
Thanks, Bob. So with that, we'll, we'll turn it back over to Ms. Carnahan, you know, for any questions we have, or that you may have. But really, I think what we're just looking for is just a, a date to be set so that we can really present this in earnest and answer any questions then in more detail, or certainly that the public might have.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any very high-level questions from the planning commission at this point?
Could I, could I add a couple of things before?
Certainly.
So I just wanted to mention that everything that Vince and Bob talked about on behalf of the property and Mr. Verden is accurate from my perspective. Of course, for the record, because Vince talked about the litigation, I of course have to mention that we don't think the decision of the city commissioners on the zoning was arbitrary and capricious, but I will say that Mr. Verden has a very unique property, and he has worked with the city in the, in the building of the library and getting the easements. I can remember being on his property several years ago, talking through some of this stuff, and he also has a fig tree on the property, then he was nice enough to legit pick me figs and let me, send me home with figs to eat. So he's been, he's been, you know, he's got a very unique property, he's been very accommodating to the city to get the work done that we needed to for, for the library. So we have worked collectively. This, so you all know, this project, to the extent it's ultimately approved, it will end the ongoing litigation over the zoning. I want to be clear that that shouldn't be a driving factor in, in any way as to your decision. There are certain standards that you, you need to apply to determine whether this is a compliance subdivision that is worthy of approval. But, but just so that, just so you have the full context, that the litigation would be resolved if this is ultimately approved. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Drew, I see you're here. Do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, no, no, I'm very familiar with it since I was around when the first decisions were made before the litigation. So, no, I don't. Thank you. I've been trying to get unmuted since the meeting started, but I'll come back to that in a second. I have another comment I want to make on something else.
Okay. All right. Tom, Tom Panetta, did you have a, a high-level question?
And maybe it's in here. I've been through the, and this is, there are multiple copies of the plans. I may have missed it, but one of the concerns is going to be street width, turn- But one of the concerns is going to be street width turnaround and the proposed no parking zones. Is where the no parking actually delineated on any of the plans?
So it's not actually delineated. We have asked that they provide no parking signs on the street for those areas. Due to staff adds, due to the, to the size of the the, the street.
Right. So, because in, in the GMV report, it talks about them being adjacent or in front of property C and D. But then questions where the turnaround is and where the driveways are located. And I think while we don't have to solve it now, I think it's going to be important that when this comes before us that we have clarity on where the no parking is relative to the turnaround. The, that's proposed and the street widths. So that's just a recommendation for as we move forward, we're going to need more information on that.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks for that, Ms. Carnahan. One thing, if I could, this is Vince Robertson again. This is for the benefit of the entire commission. You know, we got the GMV report. The, the latest, I guess, which was a response to to our response on, on January 18th. On our team, one of the things we didn't want to do was sort of overburden you all with multiple sets of plans. Our responses, we actually thought it would be more helpful to you all if we went through this evening's conversations, you know, like we're doing. Get that feedback, take that into account with the information GMV got. Find out when our hearing will be and then sort of set one consolidated plans for you because knowing how these meetings work, we just didn't want people flipping through plans and wondering whether they had the latest, greatest and most updatest version of them. So I appreciate that, Mr. Panetta, and we'll definitely take those concerns along with others that were in the GMV report. And from any other sources into account and try to get you one set of plans that takes care of all that. So again, you're not flipping through multiple versions or whatever.
And Mrs. Robertson, I really appreciate that because there were two sets of plans, the initial set and then the a secondary set. So, you know, as we move forward to the public hearing, a consolidated plan review would be perfect.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, because it does, it can get confusing and we want everybody on the same page with analysis. Including the public, because it is quite a bit to look at and to consider. So thank you for doing that.
We'll make sure that the packet associated with the agenda is the most current, up-to-date version. So everybody will have that.
Thank you. It's huge. It's a big job. So thank you.
Is there a way of labeling the, the pieces that are on the website so that it's easier for anybody else, members of the public to
They are labeled.
The right ones as well?
So I usually date them by, label them by the date they come in. So the most up-to-date date is going to be the most recent one.
The question that I had sort of follows on what Tom and, and Mr. Robertson were talking about. And it's, it's more just maybe a personal question. I'm just trying to understand how, like in, in reading the pieces between the engineers, it seemed like there was still, still some discrepancy about sort of complying with our requirements. Is it conceivable that the singular package that Mr. Robertson's describing could still be sort of in non-compliance with the, the expectations that we have before the public hearing? I would hope that there would be a fully compliant set of plans before the public hearing.
Well, I get, this is again, Vince, that's my hope as well. You know, so the, the, the items that were in there, Mr. Palmer and I talked about. You know, in terms of revising the plans, you know, on the more technical aspects, we can, we can do that. There's, you know, we're, we're requesting the variances or the waivers. I shouldn't call them variances because that has a whole nother zoning meaning, the waivers. So the, obviously, those will be unresolved because we have to ask you for those, but it's our goal to get sort of everything wrapped up with the GMV report and Beacons work on that so that, again, there's not any loose ends by the time you get to the public hearing. Again, except for those waivers or, you know, and I guess I would say to the extent there's minor things we disagree on in terms of, and I don't know that there are any, but we'll point those out and hopefully that will be a very small number if there are any. So at least you know.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that the public sees it as clearly as hopefully we all will. That's, that's my goal here.
Yeah, no, understood. And I agree that it makes it easier for me to present it and you all understand it if we have that in the public as well.
Right. And Janelle will keep us on the straight and narrow by dating everything that's on the website so that people too can track any changes. I think it's an important thing to have it that way. Are there any other questions from Planning Commission? If not.
Joe and Melanie both have questions. Okay, sorry.
I'm not sure whether this is a question for Janelle or for the engineer, Mr. Palmer. Janelle, is there a city mandate that the access roadway be a street or on the other hand, is it more advantageous for the developer to have it as a glorified driveway? I'm not, not sure which, which goes here.
So since the city's going to be maintaining it, it means to be a city street. And we've actually had that discussion and the code does not allow for private roads. So it will be a city street. It does meet the 24-foot width. That is the minimum allowed for the right, for the, the construction of the roadway. So it does meet that. Correct.
And that was the subject of a lot of conversations we had with Janelle and Anne Marie and GMV. And I think even at some point, that was one of the ones the mayor was in on. Because it, you know, and I know we're getting in a little of a waiver and I don't want to get too far into it, but you know, the it's almost really overkill for the standard street requirements. We were trying to look at, you know, doing it as essentially a driveway. And sort of this was the, the compromise that we came up with, knowing that we had to ask for the waiver. So.
Okay, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, no, understood.
I think Del has already reviewed this access entrance way.
Glenn, this is Bob Palmer. Sort of, we've had a couple of meetings with Del Dot, but our official pre-submitting meeting is tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Have you addressed the reason City Council rejected it last time?
That's a reselling application.
I would say we have a briefing that's been submitted to court between me and Mr. Mendelis. That, that's on hold because we kind of got to the point where we thought it was in everybody's best interest to see if we can't work this out another way. And frankly, you know, save a lot of time and money for our respective clients, being the city and Mr. Verden. There's no, there's no way we can address that with the mayor commissioners because they've already really acted on it. So.
But let me add to that, that there wasn't a subdivision plan before mayor and council. It was purely own application, make all the zoning R4. They, they rejected that. They've never had a subdivision plan before them. This plan complies so far as we can tell from a staff perspective, with the current zoning of the property, which is the split zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Heffernan, I may have misunderstood your question on that, but that Glenn is right. That's, that's exactly how this looked, played out.
Melanie, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Palmer. If stormwater for the individual lots is going to be on the lots, what techniques do you plan to use?
Primarily infiltration. We've had a soil, for the record, this is Bob Palmer from Beacon Engineering. We've actually had a local soil scientist conduct some preliminary soil borings, again. With an eye on expense and trying to do the right thing. I had the soil scientist, actually Tom Noble, who lives in town. He works for ERI. Tom went and did a couple of soil borings in, in, on the property and found reasonably permeable soils. Tom being a soil scientist, he also prepares site evaluations for septics for residential and commercial septic systems out in the county. And there's very specific criteria that Del Dot, that Denrec has for assigning permeability rates to soil, to soil, to soils. And so Tom used that criteria to kind of evaluate in a very cost-effective way whether infiltration is, is viable or not. So to answer your question, infiltration will be the primary mechanism for stormwater for, for stormwater management.
And just for everybody's clarification, if this is approved with that process, before anybody can pull a building permit, the city will require a permit from the Sussex Conservation District verifying that they have approval for development on that property and that it complies with all of their regulations.
I'm always a little uncomfortable with onsite stormwater because you never know what the homeowner's going to do in the future. He may decide, well, that swale is pretty ugly. I'm going to get rid of it. Fill again. And all of a sudden, you know, there's no management there. So.
Well, along those lines, one of the things I'm a little uncomfortable with is that by doing a piecemeal, you're not looking at the cumulative impact of stormwater. And Sussex County Conservation doesn't review under 5,000 square foot disturbances. And in the R4 zoning, those lots are, the total lot size is only 5,000. So we could wind up with a piecemeal assessment.
Now, the Conservation District will review that house permit. Anytime you pull a permit for a new house, you have to get a permit from the Conservation District. Even if it's under 5,000. You have to get approval and they will review it for whatever stormwater management requirements they, they will have. So that, I think it's Lot B, will still, if you approve it with the proposed method, will still have to get a permit and address stormwater management at the size of the lot.
And, and Mr. Panetta, this is Bob Palmer from Beacon Engineering. We've actually reviewed this entire subdivision concept as a and, and worked with, hand-in-hand with the Conservation District for a mechanism that would allow the subdivision, as we have it shown, to move forward. And the district granted us an exemption for the construction of said lane, which we included in the packet. But as Janelle said, the, all, all of the lots will require some sort of an acknowledgement from the Conservation District, whether it's a residential standard plan or as in the case of Lot B, there would be a letter of exemption that the district would, would grant. To allow the building permit to proceed.
Any other comments from Planning Commission?
To ensure, I know Tom has made this point, that the parking's clearly delineated, delineated, delineated. Not just where parking is not allowed, but how parking is envisioned where it is allowed, given the, given the, of the, of the street.
Yeah, if they haven't already shown driveways, we ask them to show driveways. So that way then they have addressed the parking for that, those lots. Based on the 24-foot wide width of the road, there would be no on-street parking. The road is just not wide enough. Which is why staff has asked for no on-street parking signs to go on the road. And then if they delineate the, the driveways, even the ones at the turnaround a little bit better for no parking and parking, I think that will address some of your questions and concerns.
So any any additional in the simple case that someone, I'm looking to the future and their houses there, et cetera, and someone has a party. All additional parking that could not fit in their driveway would have to go out onto the city streets.
I mean, they could always park in, in somebody's, in their own front yard. I've seen that happen before. It all depends on what's being proposed. Again, they're proposing open drainage along the road. So I don't see too many people.
The road, I don't see that.
See people parking on the road. I also don't see park, people parking on Freeman Highway. I, I, I don't think there's actually room for that there. And then somebody might try and park on Kings Highway, but I, I would expect, if you're having a large party. I think some of the driveways are going to be rather deep. And if they have garages, you've got, again, room for cars in the garage and then in the parking space, in the driveway. So I think they show the driveways. The, the driveways may actually, some of them may provide more than one or two parking spaces to allow for some of that overflow.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the problem we have within the city of Lewis right now in terms of parking. So.
But again, they are only required to provide the two off-street parking spaces per, for the code as a single-family residential dwelling.
It gets a little more complicated when we've got the stormwater being done on a side-by-side basis through infiltration. Don't we complicate the the performance of the stormwater infiltration if we're parking periodically? Maybe not. I don't know.
It depends on where, where it goes. Again, I, I see most people just parking in their driveway. Maybe borrowing, being neighborly and, you know, since it's proposed to be for family, that they would park in the the, the family's driveway if they needed it. But again, they are complying with their code requirement that they only have to provide two off-street parking spaces. I know there's a whole history of parking concerns in the city. But they are meeting the, the requirement of providing the, the minimum parking spaces. And again, if they show the driveway, they may actually be exceeding the minimum requirement for the number of parking spaces.
At 24 feet, can you park it?
The, the point is, is that most city streets are wide enough to, to allow for parking at least on one side of the street. So when we say the requirement is you provide two off-street parking spaces, when it's a city street that's maintained by the city. I, I mean, I haven't done a full survey of the city, but it seems to me there are very few that, that do not allow for any parking at all. And that's what we're, we're saying here.
Yeah, and that's part of the, your, your decision-making as part of all of the waiver requests for everything. And a 24-foot wide road does not typically allow for on-street parking. And especially with the open drainage or the stormwater manager of the road itself. I, I don't believe people would be parking along the road. But I can be proved wrong.
Janelle, I think you, you hit it on the head though, is while the code only requires two off-site parking. The predicate is that there's on-street parking. And by granting waivers of width and drainage and the rest, we're forestalling any on-street parking. So, and anyway, I think it's for, for the discussion down the line.
Yeah, I'm going to guess that's going to be part of the public hearing.
Yeah, this is for the engineer and the applicant, but it's good for them to know that these are topics that members here will want to hear more details and, and how it's been thought out. So I think that's good for them to hear. Any other?
Yeah, I have a couple of other questions.
Okay.
They just have to do with the materials. And again, maybe it's just because we already have several map sets and I may may have been looking at the wrong one, but there's a beacon map, T 1.1. There are a couple of maps that show the different sort of site data, height and bulk requirements, setbacks and so on in the margins and the fine print for the two zones. And in several places, the heights in some places for some of the zones, it says 30.5 or EBH. And then in another one, it says three stories. And I went back and looked in the tables that we have. They, both of those zones have a 30.5-foot requirement. And I was just wondering if that can be cleaned up. The other thing had to do with a, was a, the roach. There was a roach map, a roach engineering map that had hatched polygons, but there was nothing in the key to explain what they were. And maybe that's been
That has been resolved.
Okay. All right. And then the last question has to do with the 40-foot permanent easement. Is that the sewer easement? Out by Kings Highway?
No, that's, this is Bob Palmer from Beacon Engineering. In one of the meetings that we had with Del Dot. Originally, Del Dot, because Kings Highway is, has a functional classification of major collector. Del Dot considers the right, the minimum allowed, right, the minimum required right-of-way being 80 feet wide. And so originally, Del Dot was looking for a right-of-way dedication to allow our, the right-of-way to be 40 feet from the physical center line. And then a fit, then Del Dot requires a 15-foot wide permanent easement for utility. a fit, then Del Dot requires a 15-foot wide permanent easement for utilities, sidewalks, stormwater and things of that nature. And so one of the concessions that Del Dot made, because this is such a unique, one-off type property, Del Dot agreed that a 40-foot wide physical right-of-way dedication wasn't warranted because of the nature of Kings Highway and Historic District and such. So Del Dot has mandated that we instead convey a 40-foot wide, sorry, 32-foot wide permanent easement. And so that's what you see along the frontage of the property on Kings Highway. One thing I didn't say is that we have been in conversations with Mary Roth from the Byways Commission. And we talked about landscaping and entrance beautification and fitting into the neighborhood and all, and things of that nature. And I explained to her, and with her being part of Del, you know, being part of Del Dot, I, you know, I took the opportunity to share with her some of my frustration, for lack of a better word, with the trying to fit this, you know, this small sleepy little subdivision into a checkbox. And she agreed that some of the things that the Planning Department at Del Dot was asking for really weren't in harmony with the byways. And so she's agreed to kind of go to bat for us to help get landscaping out on the front, keeping things more in, to an in-town setting sort of thing. So, kind of a long-winded answer to your question, Mr. Crosby, but that's, that's what, that's what that line represents. Is a, is an easement to be dedicated to the state.
And I appreciate the follow-on with the byways, because that was another question I had. Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent. Any other questions? Janelle, do we have any from the, any questions from the public?
I do not see any.
Then in that case, I think we're ready to hold, to set a public hearing. Looking at my notes, this is to be done after we've received reports from Parks and Rec, the City Engineer and Board of Public Works, along with the applicant's request for the public hearing. Planning Commission has scheduled to hold an initial public hearing. So, Janelle, do we have a date in mind for this?
It depends on how fast you want to move. We could do it before, at 5 o'clock. We have been doing public hearings at 5 o'clock before the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meetings, which I believe is February 17th, if you wanted to keep with that. With that process going, so we could do like a 5 o'clock on the 17th of February.
Will, will the applicant and GMB have had the chance to reconcile the next round of comments and issue a clean set of plans so that we, so the public has time to look at them?
Thank you, Mr. Panetta. That was going to be my question for Mr. Palmer. And also, it sounds like there's a Del Dot meeting. It doesn't sound like there is one. I think he indicated tomorrow would, would there be a result from that meeting? I just, again, back to my point about giving you too much information or not complete information. I don't want to delay this because it's been a long time coming, but I also want to keep it as straightforward as possible for everybody. So I'd ask Mr. Palmer to just chime in on that.
Yeah, thanks Vince. I, I would like to sit here and say, yes, we can have, well, we can absolutely have a set of, a complete set of plans by the 17th. Unfortunately, I don't think that gives anyone any time at all to review anything. I'm not sure how comfortable you folks feel, how much time you think you would need to review the next set of plans.
Could you get them to us by the 12th? Because the 15th is President's Day and a holiday for many. So I'm wondering if, if, is that possible? Does that seem feasible? If you could get them to Janelle so that she could turn them around, post them on the web, and we could have the weekend to look at them? Is that possible?
Or do you want to push it out another month? Or is there another day that you would like to have a meeting?
Did Chairman McKay have some input? He may
He is on the line. Do you have any comments on that, Drew?
Well, I was thinking that March 17th at 5:00 PM is a reasonable time, because I don't think three or four days is enough for the public to look at this. And given all the controversy that follows this, the litigation and otherwise, I think we need to give everybody a full airing on this. And I would suggest 5:00 PM on March 17th, which would be the next regularly scheduled meeting, to make sure that all the ducks are in order and that we're fully prepared to have a discussion on the final plan.
This is Vince Robertson. That works for me, but I'm not the one that's engineering it. So I'll ask Mr. Palmer if he could just chime in for sure on that.
Sure. So, given the nature of the comments from GMB, I feel pretty comfortable that by March 17th, actually even by March, by February 12th, I feel pretty confident that we could have a respectable set of plans that would essentially represent the final plan. The outlier that has, as I'm sure you can imagine, given us some concern, is Del Dot. It's taken us quite a bit to get to where we are. And Vince, I don't know if you've come across this yet, but there has been yet another change in the garden planning. So there will be some new faces that I'll have to educate on why we're doing what we're doing tomorrow. So I would say if we can set, i- if the board would be agreeable to setting a date for March 17th, and then I can just keep Janelle informed. And if we run into a roadblock, we can pull the public hearing from the agenda and move it to the next month. I don't want to do that, but if the board's agreeable to something like that.
Did you say March or February 17th?
March.
March.
They're both the 17th. But it's March.
But I think we need to make sure that there is a, it's not ready on the 17th. We need at least a week before that. And I prefer more to have the material in the public domain.
No, I prefer if he could, if he could get us, the plans back by March 1st, which is a Monday. And that way then you will have almost two full weeks to review, a little bit more than two weeks to review the, well, I need to get it put together. And then you'll have about two weeks to review it. And if he can get it to me sooner, then that would be better. And then I can get it out to everybody ahead of time.
Do we need a motion for this, or can we just set the hearing?
I appreciate if you take a motion. So it'd be a motion to set a public hearing for March 17th at 5:00 PM on the Verden Major Subdivision. And that the material would be submitted no later than close of business, March 1st, preceding that meeting. Yep, thanks.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Anyone opposed? No, so the motion carries, so the public
I think Melanie was opposed.
No.
No, okay.
So the meeting is set then for March 17th, with the documents being submitted as early as possible, so that we can all be conversant when the time comes.
But no later than close of business, March 1st.
March 1st. Excellent. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everybody. I appreciate it. We'll see you in March.
Enjoy the basketball game.
Thanks. Tip-offs in a minute and a half.
As a basketball player, I know they have a game tonight at 7:00 PM.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Kay.
Yes, Drew.
Can I just go back for a minute? I'm sorry, I was muted forever. And Janelle and I were having trouble getting unmuted, which may have been in everybody's best interest. But I'd like to go back just a minute to make a comment about the action plan.
Yes, sir.
The genesis of the action plan and the schedule for this year is my crazy thinking. So I wanted to set it into context, because there's been some misunderstanding about the nature of the action plan as I see it and how we're going to use it. And Sumner, I certainly agree with your support that this is something that is useful for us and the city. In fact, my perspective on this is, is different than the bifurcated list. The action plan in its entirety, one list, two lists, whatever, is not the Planning Commission's list in my mind. What the Planning Commission did, much as we do for the comp plan, is we drew upon past history where we found questions or issues in applications, where we found inconsistencies or problems in the code, where people have complained or recommended changes. And thanks to Kay with her archival knowledge and history of the Planning Commission, and everyone else who contributed ideas that were laying out there to be addressed, the list was put together, which is a comprehensive list. In my mind, the action plan list, again, one or two lists, is not the Planning Commission's list. It's Mayor and City Council's list. It's their decision to decide what to do with the items that were sent forward. There are some that are clearly within the broad authority of the Planning Commission, both by city code and by state code. But the ultimate decision in my mind for the implementation of the action plan is vested with the Mayor and City Council. So in the process of their evaluating the various steps that are now before them, they should take into consideration the notion that this action plan really is one for them ultimately to decide, because all of us are only recommending bodies. And secondly, there are some things that may be handled administratively, as has been suggested. Some things that could be handled by other bodies. Some things that have to start or maybe stop with the Mayor and City Council. But I do think my intention was that we get the action plan before the Mayor and City Council. What they approve for the Lewis Planning Commission is indeed our charter for much of the remainder of this year, in addition to some of the other applications that we know are going to be coming shortly, or coming back to us rather, for final review of final site plans. But the action plan does, as Kay has tried with Yeoman's effort to get into the mindset, that it does feed into the comp plan, a much more aspirational document than the action plan, which is talking about very specific changes that might be needed in various parts of the code, regulations or otherwise. And I think it's the first successful effort to categorize, identify and present these open items that have been laying around for years, some of them, to get the city on the same page. It is also, as I've said to my colleagues on this call many times, this to me is getting the Planning Commission back to planning, getting us back to what I think our core function should be, as opposed to reacting to yesterday's news or yesterday's application solely. While those are important responsibilities, I think we need to get out in front of some of these issues. And I think the Planning Commission, because of your talents, those of you who are on the call, present company accepted, this is an undertaking we can take. This is a challenge that we can respond to. And I think we can make successful and meaningful changes in the city with our recommendation. So I want, I wanted to just emphasize the point that this is a comprehensive undertaking intentionally. It is not to say that the Planning Commission is the only body that could address these, even given our comprehensive authority in the, in the codes. But I want all of us to be thinking in broad terms and wearing our planning hats as we look at these action items and decide, based on what the Mayor and City Council sent back to us, those things that, that we agree with, those things that we don't. But ultimately, it's their call to make the roadmap for the city. So I just wanted to update everybody sort of on what I was hoping, what was my perspective. And Kay and Janelle tried hard to get the presentation across to the Mayor and City Council and were not entirely successful. And I apologize. I could not get unmuted at that meeting to offer my thoughts. But I just wanted to make sure that the benefit of my thoughts, and if you disagree with them, I'm happy to, you know, discuss it further. I don't want to take more time tonight. I entertain one-off calls to talk about it. But I think this is, if you will, making the first city and the first state truly the first city if we undertake some of these things. So thank you, Kay, for giving me a couple of minutes to catch up when I finally got unmuted.
Well, no, I'm glad that you were expressing your thoughts, because I mean, that, the action plan, I think, the contents of it is really impressive when you think that we are all volunteers. We are not professional professionals in this field. Because these are serious, long-term, very important implications. And I think the thing is, is that these aren't things we've just pulled out of the air. The evidence has led us where we are. And this is the evidence, some of the, like the Quinn report is from 2014. So it's been building and building and building. And now we've gotten here, and what are we going to do with it? Well, we need to take the ball and run with it, is I think what the action plan is saying. So I hope we get a clear mandate from Mayor and Council to do just that.
How much of a living document do you imagine this being? I mean, is this done? I mean, because I can imagine as we start to roll our sleeves up on some of these things, as I think you suggested, Kay, there are certain other items might pop up that would help us get to the goal.
I think it could change a lot very quickly. And I think if it helps us have a comp plan that we can really use, that would be really helpful. I think I felt, at least I felt, after we did the second comp plan, that it was jumping through hoops to satisfy somebody else's list. That the first comp plan was really helpful when you sat, I mean, it's full of bullet points of things we needed to do. And we got through some of them. We didn't get to a lot of them. But it really helped pull it all together. And I would hope that the next time we, we have something like this, I think we all feel that way. I'm hoping that the action plan feels that way. You know, some of those things are grouped, and if we change one thing, the many other things will, will change with it. If we could click some things off and get them done, that would be great. So we'll see where it takes us, I think.
Sumner, I think in succinct answer to your question, it is a living document. I don't think it's a one-time deal. We won't get it all done. And there will be things that come up that affect decisions in the short term and long term, some of which we won't be able to get to. Kay made the absolute imperative point that we are all volunteers and this is not our full-time job. Because we could spend a lot of time on this. But I think when we get back from Mayor and City Councils, we will see their ranking or their mandates for things they want us to look at. And we're going to have to continue to prioritize those. But I don't think we will be myopically looking at any one of these with blinders and not taking advantage of additional information that comes in during our evaluation and search. As you know, we've talked to the city manager about additional resources we might need to address some of these questions. Hoping that's going to be provided to some degree in the next year's budget, which is in process of development now. So it is a, it is a broad undertaking. And while I don't want us to have blinders on, we will try and make it as manageable as possible, so that we can accomplish some of the objectives that are most important.
Excellent. Well, and
Thank you, Kay, for letting me, we go back on the agenda. I apologize.
No. Actually, it's kind of perfect, because this has brought us into D, reports by city solicitor liaisons, planners and commissioners. So this has been discussion, again, back to the action plan. So we'll wait to see what we get from Mayor and Council. We'll set another meeting and we'll sit down and discuss what we've got. Thanks for the context. It's helpful. The next item on the list is the Annexation Subcommittee. Now, Sumner, you've been working on this and you've got a team now.
Yes, I have a team. Nancy and Melanie have agreed to work with me. We were supposed to have a meeting, I think it was last week. I canceled at the last minute. I felt like I personally wasn't prepared properly, wanted to have a better handle on that history. It sort of, sort of gets to some of the things we heard just a few minutes ago, the Verden thing. I mean, there's a rich history of of efforts between various committees of the City Council and some efforts within the Planning Commission. And I think
And I think, I just want to make sure that we do this right. I don't want to rehash everything that we've, that's been done before by all the other committees. In talking with each of the two committee members separately, just trying to get a handle on how we're going to proceed, even for the first meeting, I think we're all in agreement that, that the goal here is to look to start with the basis of the Annexation RES and Annexation mix codes, and see where we can make some refinements to make them as good as we can make them. We have our first meeting set for the 4th of February, correct, Janelle?
Correct.
Okay.
11 o'clock in the morning.
So just, I, I, the reason I asked the question a moment ago of Drew is, having gone through the first ever attempt at using the AXRES ordinance as we were reviewing the Lewis Waterfront Preserve property, I was brand-new to this whole process at that point. But to me, it seemed like I kind of wanted to have a laundry list of things that I'd like to clean up. And I can imagine that, that every time we do something like this, we're going to have items that we might possibly throw on that living document I was asking for a moment ago. You know, as we go down any one of these subcommittees, there are opportunities to refine or possibly add items to the, the action agenda that will help round out the goal of making the best comprehensive plan. I'm pretty sure we're going to have some of those as we go through the annexation process.
Well, I think, well, we'll add whatever needs to be added to, to keep things going as we learn better ways to approach things, or as we learn. You know, I have to say, a lot of the decisions that we make, they're not easy. And they affect people's lives in a very basic and very important financial way. And it's a quality of life issue. If we get it wrong, we don't want to hurt somebody. So this is a lot of pressure. And I, I think if you just take it one step at a time, you know, and this goes for all the committees, just get in there and get started, and then see where, see where the information takes you. I think this is where we've, we've been building for so many years now with smart reports, research, very involved staff, very involved Planning Commission members. And I think it's pretty clear the kinds of directions that we in the city are going. And this is how we get there, one, you know, one subcommittee at a time. So, so excellent. So you're meeting February 4th at 11:00 AM?
Correct.
Excellent. Floodplane Subcommittee.
I believe we're awaiting comments from Denrec. So there has been no action last month.
And just where everybody-
Janelle, did you?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Janelle, were you able to talk with Melanie about the couple of open items that were in the draft that, that were missing some language?
I apologize, I've had, I have not had the, the chance to, to reach out to her. I can try and do that the, the end, the rest of this week to discuss about those, those few things. It was just some minor tweaks to, to the, to the ordinance. And we are working, trying to get those items to FEMA. We've got a bunch of stuff that we need to get to them, and they like to see everything all at once. So we're trying to put everything together and send it all up one time. And then we, we're hoping to do that rather soon. So that we can get that back.
The point, the one other point, in addition to the tweaks that, that Tom and another suggested, there was one section that was missing some, some language that was obvious, and need to get that clarified. So appreciate your following up on that, thank you.
Sea Level Rise Subcommittee.
We, we postponed our meeting from this morning because of the inauguration. So we've reset, scheduled it for next week. It's Thursday, I believe. Yes, next Thursday at 11:00.
28th at 11:00.
At, at 11:00. So it's been reposted. At that meeting, we'll be discussing the comments we received from Denrec on our proposed ordinance, and then internal comments between Sumner, Bob, and myself. So we, we, we'll have more of an update next time. And hopefully, we'll be, we'll be ready to present to the Planning Commission at the next meeting the proposed ordinance change for critical infrastructure, or for infrastructure, and for redevelopment.
So that's for the February agenda?
Correct.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Wetlands Buffer Subcommittee. John, are you there?
Yes, I am here. I just don't have a video. We're looking, I think we're kicking some dates around. I'm not sure if we got full consensus on 2-5 yet or not. Are we good with that, Janelle?
I believe we are. I, I, I think we had at least three of the members say they were good. We're 2-5 at 5:30. And yes, it's a Friday. Apologize, it was that or a couple more weeks, and I think we wanted to get moving.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so 2-5 at 5:30. Excellent. Any reports from city manager?
Nope, she, she was good.
Okay. Glenn, anything for us?
Just a couple of updates. The, the Mayor and City Council has considered a moratorium on the source water protection ordinance for a period of time. There's been a realization that there's some difficulties in application of the current ordinance. So that will be coming to the Planning Commission for a recommendation. Just something to put on your radar. Hasn't made it to yet, but I think in their last meeting, they referred it to the Planning Commission. Also, the 203 Savannah Road rezoning, that's, continues to proceed. Again, that's the property at the corner of Savannah and Cape Henlopen Drive. There's a public hearing on the comp plan amendment portion of it on February 1st at 6:00 PM. And then finally, there's a, there's been a rezoning, or not rezoning, an annexation request for the property at 415 Savannah Road. That's the property coming into the city on Savannah, the first property right over the trail on the right-hand side, triangular shaped. That's been, there's been a request made for annexation. I think, Janelle, primarily because there's not, they don't have city utilities, or at least not anymore. So, so that will be coming, so the, the Mayor and City Council has set up, the first step they have to do is set up a annexation committee that'll make a report back to City Council. And then I presume that'll go to the Planning Commission for a recommendation after the report is made.
Okay.
Bonnie also just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that she's on the, she's listening, but she is, she missed the first part of the meeting, but she has nothing to report.
Okay. Thank you. Any planners have anything to report?
I do not.
Okay.
I think Joe does.
H. Park, H. Park finally has a meeting coming up on 2-2. They have some bylaws changes, and I think they have a application for something. So, see you on the day.
Okay. Excellent, anything else to report from anyone? If not, we'll go on to the minutes of December 16th.
I have one correction, Kay.
Yes, I was going to say, I thought that correction, but go ahead Drew.
Yes, and I let Jackie know about that as well.
Okay, so it's a, just a, I was a little bit loose with my description of the building city official, and I think I referred to him as Mr. Flood instead of Mr. Davis, as a, as, as the city manager was describing him as the, the liaison on all flooding relating matters. So in the minutes, it reflects, and I'm sorry, I don't have the, the minutes with me. It reflects that the building official is called Mr. Flood. It should be Mr. Robin Davis.
This is the, the minutes from December 16th, Section B, the first full paragraph, the fourth line, is where the correction is.
Thank you Kay.
Certainly. Any other changes, corrections?
Yeah, I have a question. I don't, for some reason, have the minutes up right now, but I wrote down a note about the first bullet under, under C1 for the December 16th. There was language in there about stormwater practices being counted as open space. I thought the discussion was actually kind of the opposite of that, that I think Kay, you were sort of making the point of, you know, we sort of always wonder whether open, it should be, whether stormwater practices should be counted as open space. I just wanted clarification as to what we really meant.
Okay, what it says is, Ms. Carnegie's review and discussion by the commission included, first bullet point, 10% code requirement for open space changes for cluster developments, open space to include stormwater retention.
Maybe I just came away from that meeting with the wrong idea. I thought the idea was, you know, questioning whether, as I know we've had this conversation in, in various meetings about what should be included and what shouldn't be included in open space calculations.
Right, and I think-
Taken it the wrong way.
That's alright, the item on the action plan, I think, is more to the effect of meaningful, useful open space rather than space next to sidewalks, that kind of thing. I think that was the intention.
Yeah, I think it's also one of those items, should we look at open space being counted as, as part of that? So I think that, I think it does actually reflect what was discussed in a bigger picture, because I think one of the items is just looking at open space and the uses.
So it's a question rather than a statement?
It was, it was, yeah, it was, yes.
An observation, yeah. Anything else for the December 16th regular meeting minutes? If not, could I have a motion to amend them as, as stated?
Approve them as stated, as amended.
Have a motion in a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the public hearing meeting minutes from December 16th. Any changes, amendments, corrections? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Minutes.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I have a motion in a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that is it for our agenda tonight. Thank you, everyone. I know this was a lot to, to blast through, and I appreciate everybody's work, because I know we're all really busy people, and we are tackling really difficult, important subjects in our subcommittee work. And I just want to say thank you to everyone. I certainly appreciate it, and I think everybody's doing great work. So thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Right now.